I call the Tuesday, August 14, 2018, work session meeting of the City Council of Portsmouth to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And our city assessor has a new employee that you want to introduce to council.
I do, yes.
What's your?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, staff, everybody, Dr. Patton, Mr. Ashby. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce my new city assessor, Assistant City Assessor. Comes to us from the city of Richmond. She was a 15-year resident here in the city of Portsmouth, ran a business, was very active in the West Park View Civic League. And like I said a couple of weeks ago, she takes our A-team and makes it to A-plus teams. Stephanie Love. So excited to have her.
It's good to see some of you again. It's great to come home. So, thank you, Billy. And I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Dr. Pat?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. Our first presentation this evening, Mr. Daniel Jones, Chief Information Officer, will provide a presentation on one of the city council's big four things, becoming a smart city. This presentation will encompass the upcoming Smart City Citizen Connectivity Study, which will survey the citizenry regarding the connectivity and technology barriers which may currently exist and provide recommended next steps for smart city connectivity. The city advertised for a company to construct fiber optic network for the city and the Portsmouth Public Schools using the PPEA process. This project, when completed, will have across the city, a new municipal fiber network consisting of first two miles of fiber and 52 miles of fiber and connections of 56 community anchor institutions and three Internet points of presence for the city and for Portsmouth Public Schools. The second presentation, as requested by city council for further research, will be a discussion of the city council rules and procedures that govern city council meetings and public work sessions. The city attorney, Mr. Solomon H. Ashby Jr., will provide the legal considerations to facilitate city council's discussion of the current events. In addition, after that presentation, we will have our planning director, Mr. Bob Baldwin, to come forward and speak to you regarding the public hearing item, C-1802 Laurel Park.
Okay.
Mr. Jones.
As one of the four big things, becoming a smart city, that was identified during the February council retreat, our holistic approach to becoming a smart city, in essence, is the connectivity of the city. This evening, I will provide a brief presentation regarding our upcoming Smart City Connectivity Study. And this presentation will outline the Connectivity Study purpose, stakeholder engagement, the citizenry survey method, and the Connectivity Study deliverables. As I alluded to, the essence of any smart city or foundation is the connectivity of that study. Through this study, we will identify the zones or regions in the city that have or lack the connectivity. The study will also take into consideration the upcoming municipal network or the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network, PCBN. The study will also identify the connectivity provider options, and those are either your mobile carriers or your current ISPs. And the engagement sessions will include major businesses as well as neighborhood champions. Stakeholder engagement includes internal stakeholders such as city council, public schools, economic development, planning department, and public safety. Now, this is not an all-inclusive list, but this is your major internal stakeholders. Your external stakeholders would include civics leagues, Dominion Energy, your Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, healthcare providers, as well as our military. The citizenry survey method, the geographic strategic sampling would involve overlaying existing geographic regions for random sampling of citizenry and businesses. It is estimated, on average, each region's sampling would include about 3% of the residences and 50% of businesses. The reason that businesses will be oversampled is because of the location and the number. They're not all within one region, and the number of businesses within that region is lower than a residence would be. The survey delivery will include completion instructions, as well as the option of submitting it electronically or through a paper copy. We want to send the first batch of the survey out as a paper copy, even though it is a connectivity study, but we want to be sure not to include any residents or businesses that may not have connectivity, because that's the scope of the study.
And we ask questions as we go along?
Yes, whichever you like.
What types of questions will you ask?
The questions that will be on the survey is, are what technology barriers do you see? Do you currently have Internet connectivity? Do you use mobile over a traditional broadband? Do you use it more for business, school, work? Generalize what a connectivity would encompass. After we deliver the first round of surveys, we'll see what our response rate is to get a statistical confidence level of that. Once we achieve that, then we'll start meeting with civic leagues, as well as open the digital survey up citywide to those who may have not been selected, but we want to have that input. The deliverables of the study is to identify unserved areas of our city, underserved areas of our city, the geographic connectivity models that either exist presently or could exist, the subscriber cost models of our citizens, how much are they paying based on the service that they're receiving. And all this would come into a regional, state, and national ranking model for connectivity for our citizens. And we expect the survey to be completed within about five months. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
Questions? Yes, sir.
The survey that you're conducting, the model for that, is that designed around some previous surveys that have been used or developed in other regions?
The survey was drafted from our consultants that we have for that, that are the, one of the national broadband consultant leaders. And they've conducted this survey elsewhere.
Okay.
And the geographic sampling, I mean, how will you anticipate to determine who gets the survey?
What we will do, we'll take information that we have now, what we refer to as basically GIS layers that are already created, from the policing zones to the flood zones to the, and then start to aggregate that all, and then randomly draw out a number of residents and businesses within each region, and then wait for the response.
Can we get a copy of the survey that goes out? I'd be interested in seeing the questions.
Could get in your box possibly tonight.
And then, of course, when we come back with results. Yeah, as well.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I'd like to call to your attention that as a result of the city's unveiling of its smart city initiative, an article was written by our Marketing, Communication, and Tourism Division, and this is in your box, the city clerk put it in there. But the story generated and was published in 252 news and media outlets across the nation. It generated 917 Google mentions, distributed nationally in papers in Virginia, California, Maryland, Florida, and New York. It also was published in Norway, Ireland, Germany, France, and India, for a total of 83 million impressions. And our chief financial officer, as a result, was interviewed by Wavy TV that appeared on August the 8th. The National Organization of Realty dot com has been in contact with Mr. Jones with four strategic questions they want him to ask. What is a smart city? What this means for homeowners, other cities, or other cities in the region making such changes, and ask a question about broadband affordable access. Government Technology Magazine reached out with the questions, what would a city like to accomplish through the smart city designation? The second question was connectivity study specifics, could they get a copy of it? And lastly, Cox Communications has reached out to the city of Portsmouth to say they would like to be a partner with the city regarding any smart city initiatives. That is in your box.
Good. Any comments? All right, this brings us to item number two, which is a continuation of our discussion last night. We had talked about the previous meeting prior to last night, coming up with a schedule of joint meetings with the planning commission. And we asked each other to look at our calendars for September, for Thursday evenings at the 27th, and everybody said that was okay. We asked the city manager, city clerk, to check with the planning commission. And what did you get?
We have the four consensus of the planning commission that they will be present.
All right. So is it agreeable that we set a joint meeting with the planning commission on Thursday, the 27th, to start our philosophical discussion of planning? What time? 5:30?
Six.
Six.
Six to eight, that's what we scheduled.
Do we need to do that by motion outside?
Please, if you would, just to have it official.
Okay.
And where would that be? It will be here.
All right. City council rolls. Mr. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Tonight, at your request, I'm returning after providing you information in order to facilitate a discussion of the legal considerations as it relates to city council's rules concerning agenda and non-agenda speakers. As you all are aware, Portsmouth City Council and our clerk, Ms. Deborah White, in her office, religiously advises speakers when they come before the city council that this is their opportunity to address matters of public concern. As such, the Portsmouth City Council structures its meetings in such a fashion to facilitate the efficient and fair execution of government in accordance with state and federal law. Tonight, I'm going to briefly review five principles that govern as you determine how you wish to address the issue and whether or not you wish to change the status quo. First and foremost, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act seeks to ensure that people of the Commonwealth have free entry into public meetings wherein the business of the people is being conducted, and that all meetings of public bodies shall be open with limited The Code of Virginia also provides in certain circumstances and requires public hearings on particular government action, namely, sale of public lands, the changing of tax rates, and rezoning matters, as well as some others. However, it also should be noted that the U.S. Supreme Court has stated that the Constitution does not grant members of the public a right to be heard by public bodies when they are making decisions of public policy. As I have said to you on previous occasions, the city council has implemented certain limitations, and the Fourth Circuit, which governs the state of Virginia, as well as several neighboring states, has stated previously that a government entity is justified in limiting its meeting discussion to specified agenda items. You are permitted to impose reasonable restrictions to preserve the civility and decorum necessary to conduct the public purpose. But in all of, or any of these restrictions, they must not discriminate on the basis of speaker's viewpoints. The same court, in a different, in the same opinion, also recognized the government's substantial interest in conducting meetings in a relatively orderly and fair fashion. It recognizes that the official presiding, and in this case, it would be the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, whomever is conducting the meeting. The courts have recognized that there, they must have the discretion under reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions and constitutional principles. They must be able to set the subject matter agenda, cut off speech when it's reasonably perceived to be a threatening or disruptive matter, in order to conduct fair progress and discussion, whether, again, and you'll see at the end of this, if the discussion disrupts the orderly conduct of the city's business, whether by virtue of the relevance of the comment, its duration, or its tone, a public body is entitled to restrict that discussion in order to conduct government business. So those four elements, as well as some other discussions we have had, essentially provide the basis for the current city council rules that govern speakers. That gives you sort of the pillars or the underpinning of the rules that we have in place. And with that, I'll turn that back over to you for the discussion as to whether or not you, how you wish to address the status quo.
All right, thank you for doing the research for us. Any discussions? Yes, sir.
Right. The context out of which this discussion originated was, I thought, the limitation that we have when a person has registered to speak for an agenda item, and then they are prohibited from speaking at the end of the meeting during our non-agenda items. And so, I'm not clear as far as what was just presented. It sounds like that's within council's discretion to allow speakers to speak under a non-agenda item, as well as an agenda item. I think that it could be limiting speech, because, first of all, citizens do not set the agenda. And so, when they sign up, they are responding to an agenda that has been set by council. Secondly, it may not be an agenda item which they need to speak to, and there could very well be a meeting where a person has a legitimate concern about an agenda item, as well as an item that's not on the agenda. And I don't see how that would anyhow cause any disturbance or issues with council to hear from citizens on an issue which was not on the agenda, as well as an issue which was on the agenda. I just think it would be a fair process. I don't understand why the previous council decided that if you sign up for an agenda item, that prevents you from speaking under non-agenda, because there could be legitimate concerns in both.
Good point. Any comments on?
I think that's a good point. I think they totally unrelated. One, you're speaking, as the councilman said, to an agenda that was set by a council, that they had no part in setting. And two, they're there, and what has that got to do with a non-agenda? It's like apples and oranges. So I would support giving citizens the right to speak on both venues, myself.
Your non in your head?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, first, I agree with both of my colleagues. And I, that rule, I think, was here when I got here. It's just kind of been the way it was done, and nobody ever questioned it. For me, I think what's more important is when we have people speaking on agenda items, that they stay on track on the agenda item, and that we, as members of the council, help the mayor, remind the mayor to stop speakers who get up to talk about apples and veer off into oranges. If that's a, if you're on that agenda item, you don't go off into something else. That's what non-agenda time is for.
And that's kind of where I was going to go with the same comment, but also, when somebody signs up for an agenda item and a non-agenda, which I'm fine with them doing both, but when they sign up for the non-agenda item, they shouldn't continue carrying over what they were speaking about on that agenda item. It should be a non-agenda. And that's, you know, just part of, you know, the mayor rules of order. As long as we keep them on track with what they're speaking about, I have no problem with them signing up for both.
Good point.
No objections from me.
No, it's about your control and how you manage.
I think a more problematic thing that in the rules is when people either get personal with somebody in the audience, somebody that's not there, a member of this council. I think at that point, they need to be immediately told to change direction or either forfeit their time.
Red point. It seems that we have more than a majority. I agree with everybody. So, Mr. City Attorney, can you come up with an amendment that would change the current policy to allow for a person to speak both on an agenda item and as a non-agenda speaker, but right into the non-agenda, you can't speak on a previous agenda item on that meeting? Does that make sense?
Certainly.
Question, is that a rule?
Oh, it's a rule.
A rule that, the council's a rule?
It's a council rule.
Right. Okay. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure.
And so, you need to come up with the language, bring it back, so we can look at it, and then we'll consider its adoption.
And just a little caveat in there, too, it should apply to us, too, as far as sticking to the agenda, sticking to what's on the table.
Yes.
What we're voting on, though, are the rules for speakers.
Right.
Right.
Yes. Okay, you got your?
Certainly, ma'am. And we'll bring that back.
All right. This brings us to city manager, oh, no, it brings us to the explanation by Mr. Baldwin?
Yes. She'll pull up the maps. Mr. Baldwin will come forward and speak on the item that is in the public hearing tonight on Laurel Park.
Will you tee this up, explain what this is?
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Semus, members of council. I will try to explain what is going on in your application, as well as some of the information you were provided tonight. We'll start off with the map that was included within your agenda packet. We also have, I believe, a copy was put in front of you, if you'd like to reference that. But I'll just give you a little bit of a geographic reference of what we have here. It's Forest Haven Lane. This area in this red box is the parcel that is subject of the rezoning request tonight, and it's very difficult to see. I'm going to point to it. There's a line right here, and hatch going back to the left. That area within the hatch marks is the area that has been proposed for rezoning, not the whole parcel. It's just that piece that's in the red hatch. The blue line you see on the map there, that is the jurisdictional boundary line between the city of Portsmouth and the city of Chesapeake. That's at 300 feet back from the right-of-way Western Branch Boulevard, and in some ways, it affects what you have before you in a slight way. And just a couple of things I want to point out, you might not be able to see very clearly. The berm that's being referenced in that letter is this berm right here. And there's a green zone that's referenced in the letter you may have read, and that green zone is down in here. And I'll switch to the...
The green zone's in Chesapeake.
It's in Chesapeake. And so, I think we look at the sideways here, but the green zone is located along, and it's actually within the city of Chesapeake. I'm not really clear on that map there. But to go back to our map, boiling down the concerns that were raised in that, the letter came through, there's really three issues that came before you. And if you notice, that letter had an indication of support subject to three, three concerns were being raised. One was to preserve that green zone area, and as we noted, that's within the city of Chesapeake. It's outside of the city's authority to preserve or do anything with that green zone. So that is an issue which council does not have any authority over. The second issue was related to that berm. Again, that's a berm that runs north and south along the rear property lines of those properties on Forest Haven Lane. That's a berm that was established in the original 1968 rezoning, post-annexation. It is not a proffered, condition proffers didn't exist at the time. What we would refer to more as a gentleman's agreement, a private kind of agreement, where the developer indicated they would put a berm back there, or a buffer back there to protect the backside of the residential properties from commercial development on the rear of their properties. And that extends down to that red line. So again, the berm right along there. What has been requested of council, and again, from the support letter or the letter of concern, is they would like to see that berm continued, which would ride along that separation between the crosshatch parcel, which would separate the parcel that'll be remaining general residential from the parcels being proposed for general mixed use. So it'd be a buffer basically along the rear property line of the residential parcel. Again, the green, the green zone, city council can't control any of that. The third piece, they were concerned about access, someone coming out off of Forest Haven Lane accessing this property. And back, we just mentioned, if the rezoning's approved and the parcel splits, which is in the proffer from the applicant is made, we would not allow a commercial connection through a residential lot. So that becomes a zoning issue that, and we would not allow access through there anyway. So you're basically down to that, kind of that berm question. We'll just mention, under our current zoning code, with a general mixed-use property being up against general residential, if someone develops on the commercial side, there is a mandated zoning buffer required in there. Current requirement is a 20-foot landscape buffer, we call it type C, which is a combination of trees and shrubs. There's an alternative in there that could reduce that down to 10 feet with a four-foot berm or a four-foot fence to go along with it. So it's two different alternatives that are allowed in the current zoning code. So there would be, regardless, there will be some sort of a separation screen, whether the buffer has been, is extended or not. I will mention, we have talked to the agent for the applicant, advised him of his concern about the buffer. He was going to talk to the owner of the property this afternoon. They may come in with a revised proffer tonight before the public hearing. I don't know that, just they are aware of it. But that's basically the bottom line of what's on this application. It's relatively straightforward, just a lot going on because of that jurisdictional boundary line issue. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you...
Questions. You had your hand up first.
So, just to be clear, because I've had conversations with a couple of these residents. If we approve this rezoning for the hatch-marked spot, the residential property to the east that actually is on Forest Haven, can, you can't cut through a driveway to the commercial property?
That's correct.
Unless some future council at some future date were to rezone that property.
That is correct. We would consider that commercial driveway, commercial use, as it's access to commercial property.
That's a whole nother issue for a whole nother time.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So we would not permit...
Did you have another point?
No.
In discussing with the Doyle family, they're the ones that sent the email, the concern about the green zone, I note that the green zone portion that is part of Chesapeake, we know we can't touch, but the, there is still a green zone that is on Portsmouth's side.
Well, based on what we've seen, the depth of that green zone, they indicated it's 20 feet. We think that is, in fact, the setback requirement from the city of Chesapeake. That's not across the Portsmouth line. I would also mention, though, if you're developing on the Portsmouth side of that line, there's going to be another setback requirement, so you can't build right up on that property line. So there'd be an additional setback and some additional screening required there as well.
Right. So the top horizontal line, the red box, the top line, where the yellow line runs perpendicular...
Right. Right.
will that be, will that be a barrier, um, of fence or, or some type of greenery between the residential area and the commercial
Right. So what you have, here's, again, you have the bu, the berm, as they described, the berm comes along here.
Right.
If you were to pull this line straight down
Right.
there'd be a buffer requirement on this side, right in there.
So the, so the parking lot extension is not gonna go all the way to Forest Haven?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it would only be up to the end of that cross-hatch line.
So it's, it's gonna remain, um, where the existing parking lot is, above that, it's just gonna come straight, straight down from there?
As, as we understand it. And I think the primary goal of the, of the applicant is just, if you look at, square off that parcel, because you actually have residential zoning pushed into that, uh, commercial property.
Well, I think their concern is just that there'd be some buffer
That's what being spread
between both. So, from what you're saying, the, when it, when it is extended south, there still would be a berm
Right. Well, we will require a landscape buffer, 20 feet of landscaping, or 10 feet with a berm.
Okay.
That's the city's standard requirement. Certainly, the applicant could come in and proffer to extend that existing, you know, berm further down, and we'd accept that as well.
Yeah. And, right, so the buffer and the driveway issue, because that road
Right. We would not allow the driveway through that residential property.
Okay. Other questions? I like, probably, my colleagues on council always look at, um, zoning application sites, unless I know exactly. I'd never been on Forest Haven before, so I've been, went out there, too, and I've talked with the Dole's. I actually, just by chance, encountered the owner of the, uh, the dealership, and what he told me is that he intends to, to sell off the residential parcel, because he's not in the residential rental business, that all he plans to do is to square off the parking lot. So it seems like to me, from what I hear, is that through a combination of the proffer and the existing zoning ordinance, the concerns are met.
Right. Yes.
Yeah. This was very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right.
City Manager's Report. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, you have five items under the City Manager's Report tonight. The first is adoption of an ordinance accepting a conference and education assistance program grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and appropriating SAID funds to the FY 2019 Grants Fund, for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the upcoming Women in Public Service, um, Conference. The funds will be utilized to cover the expenditures for the instructors, uh, inclusive fees, production of presentation material, supplies, and equipment for the upcoming, um, conference. The second item is an adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $10,709.70 from the Virginia Department of Health, and appropriating SAID funds in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services for the USDA Summer Food Service Program. Third is an adoption of an ordinance accepting an aid to local ports program grant in the amount of $37,500 from the Port of Virginia, and appropriating SAID funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for dispersment by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services in connection with the construction of playground equipment and security enhancements at Paradise Creek Nature Park. The next is an ordinance, adoption of an ordinance accepting one-time Part C program funding in the amount of $100,000 for the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating SAID funds in the FY 2019 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Health Services to provide developmental services to infants and toddlers. DBHS is to provide development, required to provide development services to Portsmouth infants, from toddlers up to three years old. And these funds will help to pay for service planning and coordination, speech therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, developmental therapy, uh, audiology and vision services, and translators and interpreter services for toddlers up to three-year-olds. The last is an adoption of an ordinance accepting STEP VA funding in the amount of $247,500 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating SAID funds in the FY 19 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund, for use by the Department of BHS to develop a more comprehensive and assessable system of service for those behavioral health, those who are a part of behavioral health with, um, health disorders. And the STEP funding is being allocated to improve access, increase quality, build consistency, and strengthen accountability in the current behavioral healthcare services that are provided, um, to foster wellness among individuals who are part of the program with disorders. Those are the five items that are coming before council tonight for your consideration.
Any questions? Uh, any questions on that first, uh, public hearing? All righty. Uh, that brings us to City Council liaison reports, and we'll start with Dr. Whitaker.
The only report I have is, actually, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority. We, we meet tomorrow, so I have a more in-depth report at a later date. But one thing I want to bring up is there is a partnership that Regional Jail has entered into with the Chrysler Museum. Last year, the museum did it with the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, and it's called Beyond the Block: Empowering Incarcerated Artists. So they're actually an exhibit of art that was created by individuals incarcerated. This year, it's gonna increase from Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office to the Norfolk Sheriff's Office and the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. The exhibit will be able to be seen there from October the 23rd of this year through January the 6th of 2019. And it's some very interesting artwork that they do, because you gotta think, too, they're very limited on the supplies that they have and can use for security reasons, but I will say there are some very talented people. And my experience, when I worked in the jail, there are some excellent artists that are in there. I remember different ones would have some of their cellmates do artwork on envelopes and letters that they were sending home to other people, and it, it's amazing that, that some of the artwork that comes out of these facilities. So that'd be something very interesting to see, and that's, that's another example of what our new superintendent, David Hackworth, is doing. Since we have appointed him as superintendent, things are going really well at Regional Jail, and, and he's running an excellent team and has a good team that's supporting him as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Just one thing, um, Planning Commission, um, meeting that I attended, um, they sent a motion, um, that they would like, um, to have a resolution drawn up. We had some concern about real estate offices being able to be located in the downtown, so we should be looking to receive, um, some communication for a resolution.
To initiate that process, will we get
Certainly. Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, the Planning Commission has acted and requested the resolution. Planning Department is getting together with the relevant stakeholders and are gonna bring a proposal for.
Can we have it done for the consideration in the next meeting?
It has to come through Planning Commission, so you, it's gonna be 30 days or so.
Okay. Thank you. Bill?
Nothing. I do have a follow-up, though, if I, if I may, uh, to, uh, Dr. Patton.
Okay. Can we go liaison?
Yeah. Sure.
Uh, I do have one. The Hampton Roads Motor Alliance, or Ruffel, I think is the way you pronounce that, is gonna do an annual Washington, DC trip, um, to the Capitol on the 26th of September. And if you remember, that's a partnership between, uh, the private sector and the local governments. And, um, they're asking that the mayors go, so, uh, this, I think, one of the, um, members is applying the aircraft. So I think that's a Thursday. It's a Wednesday. Thank you. It is a Wednesday.
Listen.
Yeah. Bill?
Uh, some employees, retirees, have made me aware, uh, of a multiplier. Uh, I think I've mentioned this before. I would like, uh, if there's consensus for, uh, staff to come back and, uh, bring us up to speed on what that is and what's involved in, uh, increasing the multiplier, uh, to the level that, uh, most of the other cities have. I think ours is, what, 1.7
1.70.
70, and the norm is 1.85. Uh, I'd like to know how we rank, uh, within the state in that, and also what's required to increase that, uh, either in one, in one swoop or incrementally, uh, over a period of time, because that, uh, that does affect our employees' retirement through VRS, I'm told. Uh, the other thing, uh, Dr. Patton gave us an update yesterday on the, uh,
Anybody got any problems with that? It's just a report.
Yeah, just a report. And, uh, the, uh, the COLA for, uh, widows, uh, retiree widows and widowers, uh, uh, it was mentioned that that was, uh, a bonus. Actually, I was speaking to a COLA. You did get back with us, uh, when can we expect additional information?
When do we say September 24?
On what we can do?
I think in the email that I sent out to you today, um, the retirement, uh, discussion comes up for our September the 24th?
Four.
September 24th, that is.
So, so we'll get a report back at that time?
The team is working on, they'll have that by September 24th.
Okay.
That's in the email that I sent out.
Yes. All right. Good. We need a closed session?
But there's a, another issue, just, um, the discussion we had, um, at our last work session regarding, and we voted on the real estate tax rebate for a particular resident, and we stated that, uh, that should be, and I believe council advised us that, that that should be something really handled between the city treasurer, city attorney. Is, is there an ordinance forthcoming on that?
We, we are gonna provide you the ordinance, um, in September to, to, um, for, for your consideration first in advance, to have a process that does not bring that matter back to council, but we'll bring that to you first before it goes to, uh, overall on our agenda. We'll bring that to, to a work session for us.
Can you do that by the next meeting?
Certainly.
Okay.
Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, your report backs are in your box. I was thinking they were in front of you. And that item, Dr. Whitaker, is right here in your report body, or your report back.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and also, um, as we know, there was an issue brought to council's attention regarding a potential conflict of interest, and, um, just wanna say, just, I think that procedurally, that, uh, appointees should not feel like they have to contact each council member and inform them. I, I think that's really unfair on their part. Um, I think they should just refer that to the city attorney, and then let the city attorney contact council members, instead of persons feeling they have to call us individually, because it, it puts us in an unfair position as well. I think we should be advised on that by the attorney, and then we act off of the attorney's advice. And I, I think that should be a, a procedure we should use versus contacting individual council members. I think that's something council should take under consideration.
All right. Closed session. Do we have a motion?
We move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel employed by the city regarding specific matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding the city attorney's regular report to city council on the activities of his office, including pending litigation and potential litigation.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Madam, hopefully, all the role
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?